All right. Good afternoon. Welcome Planning Commission members, staff, and guests to the August 2025 Planning Commission session. Multiple staff members are here today to ensure that the meeting runs smoothly, and all applicants and members of the public are able to participate in the meeting at the appropriate times.
If you're here today and would like to speak about a case, please provide your name clearly into the microphone, and please be sure to sign in either at the back of the room or at the podium for documentation purposes. If you're here to speak about a case, you must speak up when the chairperson calls for public comment. And I'll go ahead and call the roll. Mr. Causey, Mr. Cook,
Here.
Mr. Holcomb,
Here.
Mr. Osorio,
Here.
Ms. Cuvney,
Here.
And Mr. Cohen.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll give a brief review of the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of 10 minutes. This time should include but is not limited to an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant, such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. The time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding the request. During the public comment period, members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes, and after the public comment period, applicants may have five minutes to respond. The administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware of when their time has expired, and the Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. And then are there any changes to the agenda?
Not since publication.
All right. We'll go through the consent agenda. The Planning Commission uses the consent agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the consent agenda, you must speak up after the consent agenda is read. Then that item is removed from the consent agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining consent agenda items. Will staff please read the consent agenda?
Certainly. First is to approve the July 10, 2025 minutes. Second on the consent agenda under future land use amendment and zoning amendment for a pending annexation is Annex-2025-0015 at 3404 Two Notch Road, 3422 Two Notch Road, and 1138 Head Street. Request recommendation on the assignment of the land use classification of Community Activity Corridor, AC2, and the assignment of zoning of Community Activities Center Corridor, CAC, for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as mixed residential high density and zoned general commercial by Richland County. Third is Annex-2025-0016, 1027 Rosewood Drive. Request recommendation on the assignment of the land use classification of Urban Core Neighborhood Activity Center, UCAC1, and the assignment of zoning of Mixed Use District, MU2, for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as mixed residential high density and zoned general commercial by Richland County. Case four, under zoning map amendment, is ZMA 2025-0016, 1125 Rosewood Drive. Request recommendation to rezone the property from Community Activities Center Corridor District, CAC, to Mixed Use District, MU2. Case five, under zoning text amendment, TA-2025-0011, 2608 Cardinal Street. Request recommendation to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 17, Appendix C, Type 3 landmarks to establish the property as a City of Columbia landmark. Case six, under preliminary plat review, approximately 2.6 acres on South Ridge Way. Request preliminary plat approval for the construction of a 19-lot, single-family residential attached development, the South Ridge Town Homes. The property is zoned PD, Plan Development and Wood Creek Farms. And case seven, major site plan review, Splan-2025-0011, 631 Sumter Street, 1215 and 1229 A Blossom Street, 630 and 636 Main Street, south of Divine, 614 D and 618 E Sumter Street, 1309 A, 1311 B, 1313 C, 1325 A Blossom Street, 611 F and 613 G Marion Street. Request major site plan approval for the construction of public dormitories, the new Honors College Residence and New Sumter Street Housing McBride Replacement. The properties are zoned INS Gen, OVCC, which is Institutional General District within the City Center Design Overlay District. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the Planning Commission or the public that would like any item removed from the consent agenda?
Yes. Items two and or three and four.
The two from Rosewood Drive?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to remove items three and four from the consent agenda to the regular agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion if we remove items three and four from the consent agenda to the regular.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Items three and four will be on the regular agenda from the consent.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from the remaining items in the consent agenda because my company, Cox and Jenkins, is involved in item seven.
Okay. All right. Are there any members of the public that have any items they'd like to remove for discussion? All right. CNN, I'll take a motion to approve the July minutes and the August consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the July 10, 2025 minutes and the remaining items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Probably. Well, let's see. Let's go through the rest of the agenda first. We have to read the agenda. No, it's okay.
All right. We will now move to the regular agenda, which will include the two items we've removed from the consent agenda. We will use the fallen outline for the regular agenda. The administrator will introduce and review the case. Applicants will have 10 minutes to make a presentation. The Planning Commission may ask questions. The public comment period will be open for those present. And after the public comment period is closed, the applicant may have five minutes to respond to the public comments. The Planning Commission may ask additional questions of the applicant. Then there'll be deliberation and action by the Planning Commission.
Hi. Good afternoon. So I will actually be introducing two cases if it is okay with the commission. Both this annexation and the map amendment, they are related applications, so it may be useful to talk about both of them at the same time. Of course, you will need separate motions for each case. And of course, they are separate for the main reason that one is an annexation and one is a rezoning. So the first case is 1027 Rosewood Drive, a tax map number 112030503. And this is a request for a recommendation on the assignment of the land use classification of Urban Core Neighborhood Activity Center, which is UCAC1, and the assignment of zoning of Mixed Use District, MU2, for a pending annexation. The property is currently classified as mixed residential high density and zoned general commercial by Richland County. This is about a 1.8 acre parcel that is currently used as a parking area. And then the related map amendment is 1125 Rosewood Drive, tax map number 112070403. And this is a request or recommendation to rezone the property from Community Activities Center Corridor District, CAC, to Mixed Use District, MU2. And the acreage on this one is about 3.31 acres, and you may be familiar with it as the existing Seawells. The applicant is here, and I'm sure maybe he will answer questions.
Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant be available to speak to the application?
Any questions?
Yes.
He can come to the podium, please.
Hey, my name's George McCutcheon. I live at 4537 Nandina Drive, Columbia, 29206. Been working with the Seawells family for a number of years. They have a great business that they want to continue in a different location, but they are ready to retire, and this is a great location. We had started out with a very high-density student housing project in years past and have scaled that back to this type of development that we thought would be well-received from the neighborhood, better received than maybe the much higher-density version and going even taller. Let Tom tell us more about the project if he'd like, but anyway, we think it's a good project and good for the area and good with the location that it's at, out on Rosewood, not being further back there. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. We have done some preliminary civil engineering on the project. Just mind telling us your name? I'm sorry. I'm Tom Cannarella. I'm with CES Group Engineers.
Thank you.
We've done some due diligence and some conceptual planning of what we could get there with the MU2 zone. The intention is to do a residential development of townhomes in compliance with the MU2 zoning regulations, so that's what I could kind of tell you right now. I don't know if you have any specific questions for me or the applicant or the owner, but...
Do you have a plan?
Yes. Yeah. Would you, would you want me to? Yeah, with the staff, your staff has seen that.
Sure. Mr. Causey, just as a reminder, your microphone, I think it was off.
Sorry.
So I guess I would request that for it to be moved. So just, I'm neither for nor against it.
Yes.
Mr. Causey, your microphone's not on.
So I'm neither for nor against this, just trying to better understand the project.
Yeah.
From my view, changing it from a zoning of CAC to MU2 is somewhat of a downgrade. Think that corridor, it should be a commercial corridor, just based on its surroundings, its location, but still open to kind of why you think differently and what conversations, if any, you may have had with some of the neighboring commercial buildings.
Yeah, well, we've had maybe three pre-application meetings, and so we've been through like three different refined conceptual plans for this project, but no, I agree with you as far as like it could be much more intense in that area. You know, you can have apartment buildings and, you know, that sort of thing, but what they're looking to do is something a little different and have a beautiful community of single-family townhomes, you know, in that area with open space, you know, walking paths and, you know, interconnectivity to the rest of the community. And yeah, I mean, Steve McNair is the applicant here.
We're, Steve McNair. I live in Greenville, South Carolina, 209 Anado Court. My company's Palmetto Alliance Property Group. We've been active in urban infill projects in the Greenville area. We're trying to bring that same theme down here to Columbia. We understand from the Seawell family on this past plan that they were trying to put together was very intense development, and it was putting 20 pounds in a 10-pound bag, so to speak. I think the neighbors in and around this project, they are showing some appreciation just being downsized or, you know, not biggie size, but downsized a bit in terms of scope, in terms of density on that side. We've got a quality builder, three-story townhomes. I think it's going to be a very good product. It's going to be very well accepted. We're hearing a lot of feedback. Yeah, I want, I want one. I want one. I want one. So that's generally it. Yes, that's a busy, busy quarter. There's no question about that. I think the residents in that area, I don't believe they're going to show up and protest this, but otherwise I think they would if it was a five-story edifice there. I think it would get a lot of pushback, you know, for traffic. There's already pretty bad in that area, you know, game time particularly. So I think residential is a good fit for the project. If you all have any other questions, be happy to answer.
I have a question for staff, so I don't recall seeing the site plan in the packet.
We generally do not include site plans with rezonings because rezonings are not site plan-specific, so...
Your question. I think the concern I would also have is, is that site plan going to have to come back for review?
It would come to the Planning Commission for site plan review, yes.
Is it 26 units?
I believe it's 26 or more, yes. And just to briefly address the differences between the districts, I mean, you know, we did provide some cut sheets there, but they're both generally of the same intensity of development. The mixed-use development does allow many different commercial uses. There are some parts of town that are almost exclusively commercial right now that are zoned MU2. One of the main differences is that I believe CAC allows for 75 feet in height. MU2 limits to 60. And of course, MU2 does allow more residential types of developments.
So MU2 allows townhouses, single families, structures, whereas CAC does not?
Right. I mean, that is, that's basically, I mean, there are some additional differences, but that is a significant difference between the two. And, you know, as staff, we, you know, certainly CAC is appropriate. We also feel MU2 is appropriate. There are other districts that we would not feel would be as appropriate, like, for example, a residential district we don't think would be appropriate at this location.
So is the only material difference some of the single-family allowable uses? Outside of maybe the height, which I think, I mean, 65 or 70 is the same impact there visually? On the dwelling units? I don't recall any other uses that would be of concern, but...
Right. I mean, in both cases, there's a, you know, there's no maximum density in either district. You know, there's also likewise not a maximum lot coverage. You know, we do have open space requirements, et cetera, but but in terms of that, there's no difference between, sorry, no difference between the two. The front yard setbacks are both about the same. There's a, I think actually, it's a zero front yard setback in MU2, whereas in CAC it's five. But rear yard setback is greater in CAC than MU2, but of course, there's transitional buffer yard requirements that would buffer things across the way. But, you know, in terms of uses, yes, there are some uses that are allowed in MU2 that are not in CAC, and those types of uses are the residential types of uses.
Oh, yeah. Cottage neighborhood, too?
Excuse me. So can the developer do what they want to do under the existing zoning or not?
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Clear on that.
You are allowed to do multifamily and mixed use in the current zoning. You just can't build a single-family?
Right, or townhomes.
That would be my biggest question, is if we allow a rezoning of MU2, you're able to bring the product that sits directly behind the site to the forefront on Rosewood, which I feel is wildly inappropriate for that corridor. And it would be allowed for future owners, per se, or if we, if we, I guess a follow-up question would be to staff. If some of these other sites requested annexation between George Rogers and this site, would the recommendation there be to go to MU2, or would it be to remain with that CAC that's currently in place?
That's a little bit hypothetical. I don't know if it would be our primary recommendation, but it would seem to be likewise appropriate as a classification.
It's just a single-family for me. I just don't think that being allowed, like if this were, you wanted to get the project approved and we were allowing a variance to the use, and it was just for your use, I'd probably be more on board with that. I just, knowing that single-family could one day come to the forefront of that street is hard for me to get over.
I can't speak to that, but I can say that we're multifamily, not single-family. I mean, these are townhomes. There's not single-family houses. I think the cost of the property would prohibit any single-family development there. I mean, economically, it would not be feasible to do single-family in that location in the future. future, the price of that property to go in there and knock down townhomes. We got 71 townhomes going in and to knock those down and restart over again and just to do single-family residential, it would not be feasible.
Wait, you're doing multifamily?
Well, I consider townhomes multifamily. I mean, you may or may not, it's just, you know, they're attached product. It's not detached product.
But the city considers, this is a question for staff, townhomes as single-family? Correct.
It is a single-family attached product and our definition talks about the building versus necessarily how it is used on the lot. I believe in this case, correct me if I'm wrong, but your thought was to do individual lots or just one single lot?
I mean, we could pass out.
Do you not have the concept? We've not seen the site.
No, and again, you know, and just to be clear, the rezoning cannot be made conditional on any site plan.
Right.
So, right, when you're approving the district, you're approving all the uses and characteristics of that district.
But I just want to like confirm that it's like they're attached, you know? They look like, I mean, they look like apartment building, you know, like, you know, I mean, I know you have different definitions that we went over quite a bit in your regulations about a townhouse versus apartment, you know, versus, so when we say single-family, they're individual lots is what we're looking at doing right now, but they're townhomes and they're attached. So you might have, I think it was seven, that you can attach in a line, so...
So is that so they can be sold separately?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what we've kind of looked at is, we're not looking at two or three, there's 71 that we're anticipating could be in these areas. So I just wanted to give that a little bit of clarification and it wasn't like five lots that we're like, you know, looking to subdivide. Like you wouldn't be able to do that on, you know, too many, too many lots.
I think I share the similar concerns of Mr. Cozy, but, you know, if we have the site plan have to come back before us to have the assurance it doesn't turn into a cluster of what's directly behind, maybe that would probably help me.
And to reiterate, I'm not necessarily against what you're trying to do. It's, I can probably pull 10 previous cases we've had where we have not approved a zoning because, not because of the project before us, but because of what could happen later based on the allowable uses in that zoning.
Well, if you, yeah, again, I understand if you, but if you look at the concept plan, 71 units is tightly configured, you're talking about $35, $40 million in sales there, you're talking about, you know, a very high-density site, the chances that that's going to get bowled over in the next 50 years is pretty much miniscule. And again, I think a five-story edifice there would not fit well because of traffic and the neighbors just in the back. I mean, they didn't like the student housing project that was planned to go there and we've got some very positive response from some of the neighbors to the Seewell family, you know, hey, we like what you guys are doing there now. I guess you don't have conditional district zoning, right? Or is that something, no? So I just, with the chances to, as far as I can see it, you know, been in the development business almost 45 years now, don't see that ever getting bowled over in being a reusable site and maybe, certainly not in my lifetime, maybe not even yours, but any event, I understand. Any more questions from us or what's...
Any commission members have any other questions? I do have one other question. So if there's 20, under 26, is there an ability to subdivide this and then not have to come back? After we do that, the zoning would stick?
To subdivide it and not come back, it kind of depends on the type of subdivision it is, but there could be a subdivision that would not require a review and it could also be a development that would not require review. Again, I'm not a real estate appraiser, nor do I have a crystal ball. I wouldn't necessarily disagree with the statements about the, you know, the value of the property versus what would be built there, but, you know, I can't say that with certainty.
I have one more question for the applicant. With the, you know, it's right across the street from the fairgrounds and there's all those events, do you guys expect to see like any disturbances to people living there from like the sound, the, you know, traffic that can come and all the events?
Well, it's a lifestyle choice, it's a high-energy district. I think you're going to weigh and measure that before you move in, you know, and I think that's pretty much it. And I think that, you know, personally, I'm interested, I'm a gamecock and I'm interested in a unit in there myself, so I won't complain too much about it, but it is. But your question, yeah, I think that's a decision somebody's got to make on the front end, yes, high traffic, game times, it's insane out there, there's no question about it, but I understand your question, sure.
I think I would, I mean, just to put out, it's hard to overcome not having the assurance that a higher and better use is there and not stepping down. And to your point, I think it's a great idea. If that didn't happen, we've now approved it to be used in a way that I think is not a good thing. If there's a bunch of small houses put there, like what's behind? Guess I'm, you know, that's my thoughts. I mean, I appreciate where the idea, it seems like what you're trying to do could be done under the other uses. Anyhow, any other comments from commissioners? Discussion?
I just wanted to ask if you guys, if that's okay? Is there any mechanism that the city could allow us to, you know, like with this applicant, this project move through, you know, like if we were to do it? Because I understand your hesitancy of like, if this didn't go through and it's zoned that way, then somebody else came in and did something else.
You can change the zoning after the fact.
You'd have to go back and...
After the structure was there.
Well, yeah, the property could be deed restricted.
So we're not allowed to do that?
Yeah, we are. I get it, I get it, I get it, yes, I understand.
So I like, I like your idea. I think the concern we all, at least I have, and I'll speak for the others, is if that didn't come to fruition, we've granted the right to do something there that I think would be a concern.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, like a conditional, like, because you're just giving a recommendation, right, to the council and it has to go through two council readings, if I'm correct, right?
That's correct.
But what I'm wondering is if you were to give this applicant, if it was to happen, I'm not, you know, assuming how you're going to vote, but I'm just saying if you were to give this applicant your recommendation contingent on getting like, you know, like the plan approved, you know, or maybe we go through the council meeting one time and then we get through the, you know, get through the rest of the process before going back for the second reading? Like, is there a mechanism that we could do that or...
I think, you know, what maybe I would put on the table is a motion to defer so that there maybe is additional month of time to get clarification around that. I would not want to give you guidance for something that's incorrect. And I, you know, I'm all for helping people find a way to do it. I think it would just be the concern if it didn't proceed. We can't take that back from you then.
Do you have planned unit development zoning? There's no PD zoning in the city? Planned development where you can write the script pretty much and you can limit, you know, you could certainly, you can exclude certain uses in the future, you can, you know, you can be a little more clear as to the...
I think we've gotten away from a lot of that, but I mean, that's certainly something you could talk to staff about.
Okay.
I might be able to provide a little bit of clarity on both of those things. We cannot make a rezoning conditional upon a site plan. In terms of the planned development district, that is an option in our ordinance, however, importantly, the state Supreme Court requires that it be a mixed-use development.
The mixed use?
Yes, yes. So it, we can certainly talk about that if that was an option we want to look at.
Okay.
But, you know, regardless, you know, assuming the applicant wants to go forward, regardless of the recommendation of the Planning Commission, it would move forward to the September zoning public hearing. Just, it would go with your recommendation either for approval or denial.
So, I mean, we're okay with deferring, you know, need more clarity, certainly understand that, and we're willing to provide whatever clarity we can. We do stand steadfast that it is a very high-end quality project in a great location and it would sell great there and there's a lot of value to be created there, not only for the city, but also for the future residents that will live there because it's in close proximity to downtown, a lot of businesses, you can live, you can live, work there, you know, as well, actually, people would work there and we wouldn't actually sell them as live-work units, but so...
Let me ask, how far along are you on the construction plans?
We, you know, typically we don't order civil until we get pretty far along with it. Now, we have had several back and forths with staff. We have gone in, we've listened to them very intently, we've made modifications as far as the orientation of the houses to the streets, with the rear load, with the front load, the widths of the streets and so forth, which would be, so I think we got to a pretty good sense of equilibrium with staff, if I interpreted it correctly, that, but the way they're oriented, meaning the setbacks, getting, you know, not putting 20 pounds in a 10-pound bag, so to speak, but we got a good density that we're comfortable with, our builders comfortable with it. So, but to answer your question, we own 10% civil.
At least.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's been a significant amount of time and effort spent working on what you produced.
Yes. I'm sorry. We know where the water sewer is, we know the road configurations, we know what changes we'd have to make. We've adhered to the setback requirements, the density requirements, height requirements. We've looked at, you know, all the entry points that we would use and we're not really making a significant change in terms of the driveway placements. The driveways will be off the perpendicular streets that run perpendicular to Rosewood versus, and you can see that on the concept plan, but we're ready, you know, once we get through the approval process and we have it and we'll get a green light and then we'll begin, you know, significant amount of hard civil design at that particular point in time. But we know we got the water, we know we got the sewer, I think we got the driveway permits, you know, locations that we need, and so I think we've got quite a bit of detail with it.
You've met with DAT and, you know, about your water and sewer. Are the Seewells going to retain ownership as it be during the development process?
The property, the Seewells are selling the property.
Okay, to your group, okay.
That's correct.
Gotcha. That sale has not occurred yet.
Okay, that's not occurred, no. No, we're, it's conditioned upon, you know, rezoning, annexation and so forth.
Any further questions?
I just would say, I don't, you know, if the motion is to defer, I'm not sure what we're deferring for. So it needs to be really clear, I think.
Just for clarification, is it that the townhomes can't be built there because the current zoning, or I guess because the townhomes are considered single-family and the current zoning doesn't allow for single-family, is that...
Right, it's a type of residential use that's not allowed in the CAC district. So it is a single-family attached structure.
It's, it's single-family to the extent that a single-family can only live in one unit, exactly, but it is going to be for-sale product, but it is attached product. Some municipalities consider townhomes multifamily, some others don't, you know, semantics, I'm not sure what the difference is, but...
I think of apartments as people living on top of other people. I mean, I think that's the distinction. One of the distinctions, anyway.
Well, I don't want to speak incorrectly here, but if they're not separate TMS numbers assigned to all of these units, would it still stay multifamily if there's one? And then they could come back and apply for the ability then to subdivide and rezone or sell them?
If they were all in one lot?
Yep.
So as our ordinance is written right now, they are still classified as townhomes based off the building type. However, you know, that can certainly be an item for discussion.
So if I may, a horizontal regime would be, they're not individual lots, deed is just the footprint of the houses, no lots, everything else is common area on the site and just like multifamily, that is done in townhome communities now. I'll say that to say that, you know, we would have to speak to our builder and make sure that there's no in-financing mechanisms that that type of horizontal regime would cause any heartburn or angst, you know, from any of the lenders that might be looking at mortgage, on the mortgage lending side of it. I think it can be done, but again, we would have to talk to our builder to make sure that we could do that, but that would...
I get, where I'm going is I would like to see a way to find, to help you and find assurance that what we're concerned with would be like both sides are being kind of covered here.
Yeah.
If that's a way to get to the same end, so that in the event the project for some unforeseen reason didn't materialize, we haven't granted the right to come build single-family houses.
And that's understood. I think that, yeah, so if it were horizontal regime, I think that would probably assuage your concerns about being future single-family houses there because it's a horizontal regime, it would not be single-family, you couldn't cut it into single-family lots. Not sure yet whether our builder would agree to that, we would have to check with them, but in terms of maybe looking at a PDD, we certainly wouldn't, you know, we would consider that, we've done it plenty of times, we're doing it in other markets right now. We're doing it in Ermo on a project there, we've done a PD on the lake there, and that is very intense with development agreement and a lot of stipulations, a lot of things about use, density, height, certain amount of retail, but it's a mixed-use project. So to the staff's point, you know, we did a PD, we're doing mixed use there versus what we'd be doing here.
Let me come back to, just to get clarification around my question. So if it was still a CAC zoning, this project advanced as multifamily, then they applied to become MU2, would they have the ability to subdivide those or sell those as individual units then if the zoning was changed after the project?
I see. So right now, this building type is not allowed in the CAC district. In order for it to be allowed in the CAC district and be classified as multifamily, we would have to do a text amendment to our UDO. But if that happened, then certainly that would be an option.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, you know, we've had issues like this come before where I think the project presented as a very good project, we think it might be very doable, but obviously we have a broader concern about the longer, more permanent effect of a decision. I've seen it in at least one other case where we were able to defer that and it was brought back and we were brought to a good conclusion. I don't know the minutia in this, if it's a possibility or if it's something that is even going to help, but I'd hate to see this project put down because of some uncertainty when I think that most of us agree that if it is presented, happens, we would be in favor of it. So I just wanted to throw that, that, you know, again, I've seen that happen before. I'd hate for us to end something that could possibly be good for the property, but also assuages our concerns, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think it sounds like there's a way to make these guys able to do what they want to do, but this may not be the right route, is what I'm hearing.
So to defer, to look a little more intently at your concerns and what we might be able to do statutorily to circumvent those concerns or to meet, to assuage those concerns, you know, we're all for it. If we could, you know, we 30-day timeout and let's talk about, let's see what we come up with, let us get with staff, let us talk to our builder, let's see exactly where we are in real time and what we can do to where, you know, you all are comfortable that... you know, you all are comfortable that, you know, what we're going to do there, we're going to do there, number one, and it's not going to be left, you know, an open site there where, you know, it opens itself up to maybe some uses that you all have inadvertently approved.
I feel like there's a way to ease the collective concerns and help, we can't tell you what to do, but I think there's, has to be some ways where we can find comfort in that, like, I think if, I think I speak for, if you can do that, that would be fantastic, but.
Sure.
The concern is if it didn't happen, but there's probably some way to do that.
Sure.
That may take a little bit of just working through, maybe not here.
Yeah, we can, sometimes we've deferred a third reading on zoning, you know, for a while, till we can kind of get our, you know, feet from the on-ground and have all the capital in place, have our civil design, you know, to a point where, you know, it's clear and absolute, you know, a third reading is, you know, if it could be deferred or tabled, you know, I don't know, statutorily, again, I'm not sure if that can be done, but those are the things that we'd be willing to look at and to make sure that, you know, everybody's comfortable that, you know, what we intend to do, we're going to do, and we're not going to leave, you know, the situation is kind of flapping in the wind, so to speak.
All right. Well, I appreciate it. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you. My only question, I guess, for my fellow commissioners is, I mean, I guess I would concern that if the project falls through, that they'll have single-family detached homes there in the future?
That would be, yes, I don't think this corridor is appropriate for single-family housing, and if that is ever an option, I think it's in the city's best interest to guard against that.
And Ryan, you're specifically referring to single-family detached?
Correct.
Okay. May I ask why?
Because it's a commercial corridor.
Okay.
Do we need, if we consider a motion separately or together?
Right, you will have to do motions for each one of these cases separately.
Okay. Well, it's had plenty of discussion, I appreciate everyone's input in talking through this, and I think trying to find a way to make this work would be great. Having said that, can we get a motion on the first item that was put from consent to the regular agenda for the annexation?
Quick question for staff, how specific does this need to be? Can it just be that we defer it, there need, there's no side tax, no pending? We've discussed as a whole kind of what moving forward could look like. Can the motion be a simple motion, or does it need to have some parameters?
Yeah, I think it can be pretty simple. Yeah, just make sure to list the address and all that stuff and the case number.
Perfect. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we defer Annex 2025-0016, 1027 Rosewood Drive, TMS number 11203-05-03, request, requesting recommendation on assignment of land use, classification of urban core neighborhood activity center, and the assignment of zoning mixed-use district two for a pending annexation.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Causey?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Nay.
Mr. Osorio?
No.
Ms. Cuvney?
Yes.
And Mr. Cone?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. Can we get a motion on the subsequent item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we defer ZMA 2025-0016, 1125 Rosewood Drive, TMS number 11207-04-03, request recommendation to rezone the property from Community Activity Center Corridor District to Mixed Use District, MU2.
We have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, can we do a roll call on that too, please?
Yes, Mr. Causey?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Nay.
Mr. Osorio?
No.
Ms. Cuvney?
Yes.
And Mr. Cone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
For two.
Before we move to the next one, I would like to tell you all, I appreciate you speaking and having a collaborative approach to trying to find a solution here, and I hope we can get there on the next one. Yeah, thank you all. All right.
Okay, the, the next item on our agenda is 2107 and 2115 Senate Street, two separate tax map numbers, 11406-0920 and 11406-0917, and this proposal is a request to, a request for a recommendation to rezone the property from residential mixed district, RM1, to mixed-use district, MU1. To combine, the acreage is approximately 0.42 acres, and I did want to talk just briefly about staff recommendation in this case, so we do find that the classification is, is consistent with all the plans and the future land use classification. We do note that if, if these two parcels are rezoned, it will leave a bit of an awkward, you know, I guess, to borrow a phrase from my, my old role, a donut hole of, of RM1, however, for the reasons stated about the existing plans and the future land use, we do recommend approval. And the applicant is here and can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Would the applicant be able to speak?
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Shawnee Lee, I'm the advocate for 2107 and 2115 to rezone those two properties from residential to mixed use, just to give a different variety in the community. Depending, any questions?
So, just was looking here on the sort of map here, are you guys affiliated with the S&amp;M Mansion that's kind of on the adjacent property?
Yes, that's correct.
So do you have any plans, is that part of the same property, or what is the plans, I guess, for that, the property if rezoned?
No, those is not my properties, those are, I wanted to get it rezoned to use the back door of my property for events, because I am at a residential, the other properties are residential areas, so I would help.
Gotcha. So, one of the reasons why I bring that up is I was just looking over this and kind of looking at the application, and I have a business in Five Points, and, you know, it has come up that that particular property has had a lot of issues with the city police department, with having unauthorized events, with having, you know, unlicensed events, a lot of trash in the neighborhood, like, you know, they go, there'll be, there'll be leftover event stuff, and I have no idea, I mean, I've not seen that with my own eyes, but that's what I've heard from the Columbia Police Department, that it's kind of a, somewhat of a nuisance issue, so I just, you know, what I, that gives me concern that, to push that into a, even further into a residential neighborhood. I just, and again, I'm not accusing you of doing anything, I just, that's just something that I'm, and I'm aware of.
Oh, yes, I was aware of that, too, I always talked to the department as well as the communities as well, so everything was rectified, and that wasn't on my behalf, the parties and stuff that happened, but also talked to, say, for Mr. Lucas and other residential owners in there as well, too, I didn't have any problem with it.
Any additional questions?
Have you spoken to your immediate neighbors and?
Yes.
So forth?
I also have a letter as well from the pastor, right up the road on Chaplin, Chaplin Memorial as well, too, I spoke to the neighbors.
In favor, I presume?
Huh?
In favor of the rezoning?
Yes, mhm, and the owners of the property, as well the apartments in the back and neighbors around.
All right.
You said you were or were not the owner of the, those parcels?
I'm not the owner of those parcels.
Okay.
I got permission for them, yes.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Just one more question, so that, the S&amp;M Mansion business, is that currently licensed as a bar, or what, what does that license have?
It's currently licensed as an event space.
Gotcha, okay. And what were the violations y'all were accused of doing for, for the previous, I mean, again, that property, what was the issue with that? All I know is there was some kind of issue that?
No, I think there was one where they had, they said that we had a lot of people out there, but I didn't get any tickets or anything like that from, from the fire marshal or sled or anything like that, so.
Okay. So it's an event space, not a bar?
It's an event space, that's correct.
Gotcha, okay.
Question for staff, there's a little piece of land just to the west of this application, is that going to leave a donut hole there?
So I'm still talking to the property owner of that piece of property as well.
The little strip in white?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so, yes, it would, it would leave it RM1 until we receive an application and/or if it would be rezoned.
I'm curious why you wouldn't rezone that piece or attempt to?
Well, I haven't gotten the permission from the owner yet, that's why I'm still working with them.
You don't own it?
No, I don't own, no, I don't own none of those properties that I'm rezoning.
You're representing the owners?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
The owner has signed off on this, though?
Yes, with a letter of agency.
And to make sure I'm clear, is it the same owner that owns this little tract that I'm referring to?
Excuse me?
Is it the same owner, this applicant?
No, the, this, the two owners, those are the same that I did the application for, the last one is a different, is a completely different owner side.
Okay.
And you said that you were pursuing this because you want to install a back entrance?
No, I want to like, I have a lot of people that want to do outdoor weddings and birthday parties and stuff, and right now, I'm not able to use those, to use the back door as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members left in the public that would like to speak on behalf? Sure, if you could come up, thank you.
I'm from South Carolina, I'm in Charleston, South Carolina, and I'm here in support of my partner, there's a new project that has been implemented into this facility.
Would you mind telling us your name?
My name is Joseph Bailey.
Joseph Bailey?
Yes, sir, and we made a full commitment to utilizing the facility to make a difference in the community, so there's even a website, it's ihaveadreamtowglobal.com, we're putting on a bunch of events and renting out the facility, but everything from that platform is a mission for the community, so with just hearing what the young man just said, and she told me a little bit of concerns already, we will make every adjustment for that, for the traffic, I mean, as far as the, the trash, as far as the, just everything you mentioned, I took a note of everything you just mentioned, and even the security, somebody just always watching over everything, being conscious of everybody that's next to them, so we will take all of those things in consideration, and thank you for the opportunity.
Conversation for, Mr. Cook, do you, you mentioned there's been some events down there that were?
Yeah, so, yeah.
There's been a big effort from the city to kind of?
The Columbia Police Department specifically mentioned that to the Five Points Association as it being sort of a nuisance area, I have no idea if it's the current ownership, different, you know, my, my thing is that, I think that we would all get together on this being a community gathering space, or a space for weddings and things like that, but to the previous case's point, anything can happen at an event space, and we've been particularly sensitive in Five Points over the years about bars moving into sort of residential neighborhoods, that's been a big issue that everybody, I'm sure, knows about, but this seems to be the possibility of a, almost a loophole without having to go through that, without having to get permission to do that, you're able to have the same kind of functions that you would. And again, I, I'm making no, at all accusations or assumptions that the applicant would do anything that would not be completely, you know, perfectly fine, but again, that to me is my concern, is pushing back into a residential neighborhood with the ability to have large parties and functions. If it was a bar, I don't think it would even be here in front of us.
I guess I have a question, does this fall under the scope of having the parking requirements that are no longer tough?
There is no parking requirement in MU1.
Yeah.
At previous events that, at this location, again, I have no idea if it's the applicant, there was a lot of concern with parking at the Food Lion across the street that caused a lot of.
Yeah, I remember hearing about that.
So with the, excuse me, so with the parking, I do have agreement with the pastor as well, I use the parking upside the hill to prevent the parking at Five Points and other property owners establishments, so.
Currently, I mean, they can still have events there, right?
Correct, on the front.
Just on the back?
Mm-hmm. All right, can we get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion to deny the zoning map amendment, ZMA 2025-0014, 2107 and 2115 Senate Street, TMS number 11406-09-20 and 11406-09-17.
All right, I've got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, can we get a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
All right, can we get a roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Causey?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
No.
Mr. Osorio?
No.
Ms. Cuvney?
Yes.
And then Mr. Cone?
Yes.
So the motion to deny passes?
Correct.
For two.
The next item on our agenda is a subportion of 151 Clemson Road, which is tax map number 25705-07-27, and of course, a subportion thereof, and this is a request for a recommendation to rezone the property from mixed-use district, MU2, to mixed-use district, MU2, outdoor advertising sign-overly district, OVOAS, and this is in order to allow an outdoor advertising billboard sign, you know, this is a 4,000-square-foot chunk of the parcel, actually, let's see if I can grab that real quick, it's a problem, just to show you where it is in relationship to the property, I drew a kind of a rectangle there based off the legal description, and at any rate, the applicant has provided some images of their proposed billboard, and likewise, in this case, I do want to mention a few things, the, the UDO basically declares, declared back, well, our old zoning ordinance back The, the UDO basically declares, declared back in, well, our old zoning ordinance back in 2000 declared essentially billboards would be non-conforming and did a cap and replace type of program. And so this is the mechanism to allow new billboards. Where basically if you're taking down billboards in other locations, if you are authorized to do this overlay, you can put up a billboard subject to requirements within the UDO. And so there are distancing spacing requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So not to read the somewhat lengthy staff recommendation, basically, one of the conditions in, you know, for the placement of a billboard at this location is that it must be 300 feet from a residential base zoning district. And so this property is not within 300 feet of a residential base zoning district. However, it is within 300 feet of a residential base zoning district that is outside of the city. So if it is rezoned, they would certainly be able to put a billboard there. However, when we were deciding whether or not to recommend approval, that was ultimately one of the things that we had considered. And so it is, it is one of the things that we should be considering when making recommendations on a map amendment, and that it is the compatibility with existing uses in the surroundings. So that is where we're basing our staff recommendation on it. But I believe the applicant is present and can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Excited to come speak to the application.
Good afternoon, evening, Planning Commission and Andrew and Lucinda. My name's Mason Sullivan. I work with Lamar Advertising. 1221 Atlas Road is our business address. I'll reside in Lexington County myself at 201 Misty Oaks Court. To give a little context and color that I think would be beneficial is, as Mr. Livinggood mentioned, we have to remove structures in order to replace a fraction of what is replaced as a new structure. So for reference, in the application, I would assume we're a little bit different than some of these other matters that come before you, given you're not reviewing the site plan or maybe some of those things before you look at a zoning matter. Since we do the zoning map amendment, our full application's already been filed. So what we're looking to build there is no, not dramatically different than what's immediately down the road, which is a 10 and a half foot by 36 foot sign display. And it's down the road on Clemson Road going towards 77, there's a gas station. That one has one digital display on one side and static on the other. This application is for a static display on both sides. So we're not looking to convert that structure to digital display. We're removing or have removed already two structures you may be familiar with. One more so than other. At the corner of Blossom Street and Hugh G., there's a corner that is near the cotton press, and there was a big 14 foot by 48 billboard structure that was there. Obviously, there's a lot of activity in that area. The Blossom Street Bridge Project required that we remove that sign and eventually the other small sign that's behind it to relocate it for a future project, even though that project has been delayed of sorts by DOT to replace the bridge. So that's one structure that we removed in the replacement square footage, in addition to another location on Garner's Ferry Road slated for a, I want to say it's some sort of medical MUSC urgent care type deal, or another doctor's care, some flag urgent care. So both of those structures were, one was wood, one was steel I-beams, neither were built to code. This would be up to the current code and also a relocation with, in conjunction with the DOT. I bring your attention to the fact that Clemson Road is a DOT thoroughfare that allows us to, on the state side, that's a permissible route with a DOT permit governed by state laws, which not all, majority of streets are not, but primarily interstates and highways. This is somewhat non-controversial in this artery, given that we have two other structures, I'd say compared to a route that would be more intensively developed. And as you can see on the map, you've got unincorporated area on one side with residential development, and on the opposite side, no major changes other than just two halogen bulbs that would light it up. It's going to be 35 feet to the top, which is the standard that's in the code, so it's not something way up high that people are going to see dramatically towering over their backyard. And as you can see, there's pretty prevalent commercial uses. And not to go into too much detail, but I know that there are several immediate businesses that are annexed in the City of Columbia that have already contacted us, asking for visibility for their business as a result of development being located behind, like one section behind Clemson Road. So the demand for that growing corridor of commercial business is high. And again, it's a, it's a small sacrifice for our company to take down more than what we're replacing, but we appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that in a responsible manner within the city, so we don't revert back to decades before of too much intense development of billboards. Any, any questions?
Any commission members have any questions for the applicant? I have a question, it's maybe for staff. So you're not going to go digital, it's going to be static, meaning no, no LEDs shining toward this neighborhood? Is that true or correct?
That's correct, Mr. Holcomb, and the reason for that is very specific for us. We have digital displays bookending this. So obviously, for us, static displays are lucrative to some clients while digital displays are lucrative to other clients. So if we were to have all digital or all static within a corridor, this project made sense to have a static display on both sides. So that's what we requested, and it's written into the package that, I don't even know, just to be really honest with you, I don't even know what the process would look like as Andrew and Ms. Statler and I have been navigating this. I don't even know if we could convert that to digital display, because it's going to be in a billboard overlay district, and I don't know how that would even be governed. There's only one billboard right now that's in an overlay district. The rest are all just non-conforming billboards throughout the city as a result of the ordinance and the way it's written. So there's technically not such a thing as a conforming billboard. We can convert a non-conforming billboard to digital, but it would need to meet certain criteria, which is found in a separate section of the ordinance.
Okay, so for staff, it can't be enforced that this would not be converted to digital later, correct? I mean, this is, we're rezoning this for billboards. Or is there something in the city ordinance that says it cannot be digital ever?
I was in the process of double checking, but, but my understanding is that the requirements for conversion to digital, you know, has to do with that distancing, again, from that base residential zoning district. And so in this case, it would not be within 300 feet of a residential base zoning district.
Yeah, and, you know, the Chimney Ridge is an old subdivision that was built on Clemson Road when Clemson Road was nothing but a two-lane rural highway. And you can see it now, there's no buffer. These people's backyard fences are directly on the right-of-way line of Clemson Road. So I think we have to be sensitive, very sensitive to their needs. And I think that's a really important feature there. And if it could be digital someday, that makes it even worse, in my opinion. So I'm just very concerned about the residential area directly across the street.
So I have a question for staff. Is the only non-conformity the distance from that neighborhood?
It, it would, it would conform to our requirements. So that is part of our recommendation on the, on the map amendment request. But if we, if this was within this overlay, or if it was an existing non-conforming sign and we were presented with an application, we would permit it.
Okay.
I've got two questions. If that unincorporated residential area were part of the city right now, this wouldn't be allowed, correct? Like the overlay would...
Right, well, technically, the overlay would be allowed, but a billboard would not be, so it would be a, an overlay without a, without a purpose.
Sorry, as a follow-up, is if we approve it today and in the future, that gets annexed, would the sign be able to stay? Or would it, just would it have to be, like, removed?
No, it would be allowed to stay as a, in that case, it would be non-conforming to those requirements. Yeah, so basically, it would be within an allowed overlay, but because of those, yeah, those qualifications changed, but it would be allowed to continue.
Because it was placed there before.
Because it would be lawfully established, that's correct.
Got it. I mean, I think it's semantics, you know, just because it's, it's within 300, yeah, 300 feet, it's just that that residential neighborhood is not part of the city, but...
Oh, Mason and I, I'm sorry, I was going to say, Mason and I love these semantics.
Is it, is it possible that I could draw your attention to another location within the city that may abate the concerns of Mr. Holcomb and Mr. Osorio? On Elmwood at Wayne Street, there's a very similar structure. The only difference is the location of where the column pipes oriented to the sign face. That location is, was eligible for conversion to digital copy. And if you notice, if you stand at certain locations along the street, there are LED conversion devices, or LED diverter devices. So each one of those screens has a bulb, a very tiny, tiny bulb, right? Thousands of tiny, tiny bulbs. There's essentially a blockade that will divert that light from going on those condominiums. Lamar elected to do that even though we weren't required to, and you can even see it if you stand at a certain orientation. So for example, in this matter, we could have a manufacturer, let's just say 20 years from now, Lamar decided that we wanted to approach the city to request to convert that, even though I'm fairly certain that some of those houses may be annexed at that point, we wouldn't be allowed to. If we were to do that, which is not in our business interest to convert it for the foreseeable future, given the other locations would diminish their returns, we could put diversion devices on those, and the technology's significantly improved in the last 20 years to be able to not have a light obstruction to residences. It's pretty incredible among our three manufacturers. It's more of a conversation for another time, but we have an ability to make sure that there's no disturbance to a residential neighbor. And I'm not trying to, like, muddy the waters, but we're very responsible with our, we've got a very short rope, given the history with the city from decades before I arrived at Lamar. We're very conscientious of making sure that we do things the right way within the community.
Question for staff. Signs were posted there before the reading, right? Like the DDC does? Like, there'd be a sign being like, this is going to be in the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion? All right, we get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ZMA 2025-0015, portion of 151 Clemson Road, TMS number 25705-0-07-27. Request to rezone the property from mixed-use district MU2 to mixed-use district MU2 outdoor advertising sign overlay district to allow an outdoor advertising billboard sign.
Thank you. We have a motion, and can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Can we get a roll, please?
Mr. Causey?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
No.
Mr. Osorio?
No.
Ms. Cuvney?
Yes.
And Mr. Cone?
Yes.
Motion passes, four-two.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other business? All right, thank you, everyone. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Chair, a motion that we adjourn?
Motion and a second. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nobody's opposed. Thanks.